We'll call a meeting to order. I'd like to invite the members of the Boy Scout Troop 229 to come up front and help us with the pledge of allegiance, please. They're going to help lead us. I invite you to join us. You ready, guys? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every king and justice for all.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Garrick?
Here.
Grinberg?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here.
Staff of the glass race shelter and Veterans Drop-In Center have received an outstanding service provider award from the FM Coalition for Homeless Persons. The second item is from Fargo Class Public Health. It has developed a customer satisfaction survey to solicit feedback from guests, clients, and visitors. The survey takes about three minutes to complete and asks a variety of questions, including whether the staff is friendly and helpful, if the service is provided in a timely manner, and whether the residents would recommend public health for a friend or colleague. The responses can be used to assist in making improvements on the service delivery. The survey link can be found on the Fargo Cast Public Health website. Desi, would that also be found on City of Fargo website? Could they get to it that way as well? Yes, so either one. But help them out to make sure they're doing a good job, so Desi can come back and get a report to us. Library. There are several interesting upcoming programs for visitors at the library, including afternoons, punk and decorating parties, a murder mystery event, beginning yoga, and a sewing 101 class, and a final concert of jazz into the Fall Concert Series. November is Native American Heritage Month, and the library, in partnership with the Native American Commission, Cultural Diversity Resources, Daughters of the Earth, and the Plains Art Museum, is hosting a week-long festival and educational series starting November 3rd. Art, storytellers, poetry, and film screenings are planned, as well as this festival. More details and listed events will be on the library's website at City of Fargo. Police. Community trust officer has produced another video, and they will be premiering at the First Assembly Church on October 29th. The chief got a sneak preview of the video and reports they did another amazing job. He also said there are some good cameos by other officers. Now, he's gone right now because he's trying to get a jump on the mayor. We're having the homeless soup kitchen tonight, and he swears that West Fargo guy beat him last year. But he's been in soliciting money from commissioners and staff to see if he can get ahead this year. So if any of you have an extra little buck or something to give our chief so he can beat the West Fargo police chief, that'd be great. Going back to the order of agenda, is there a motion to approve the order of agenda moving item 1B from the consent agenda to the regular agenda?
Let's move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those say no, motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, meeting October 8th, 2018?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Consent agenda, approve the following. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items 1 through 34, excluding 1B, which has been moved to the regular agenda?
Let's move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yeah.
Mahoney?
Aye.
We'll go to the regular agenda. Item 35, first reading of the ordinance enacted in Article 3901 of Chapter 39 of the Fargo Municipal Code relating to Collection of Utilities and Services. Jody can explain that, or who do we have? Jody Beartan.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. I guess we had our presentation, our last meeting, the receive and file. I guess tonight was an open opportunity for residents or businesses that make any comments they might have for the, prior to the first reading, I guess.
And did you have any comment?
The only thing we've done over the last week is, in the middle of last week, actually, sent out the flyers through our utility billing. So we have had a couple of questions and comments come through, but everything's been very easily explained.
Okay, any questions of the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, so Jody, you met with some of the larger users already, and so they, and actually they had input as far as the changes and things like that, correct?
Correct. We have additional meetings still going on. We're still working through the policies and the database has been really tricky to kind of put through, so we've been putting lots and lots of hours to make sure we get everybody appropriated with the appropriate fee.
Thank you.
Mr. Strand, you okay?
I don't.
Garrick, okay? Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 36, State Water Commission requests cost reimbursement for FM diversion flood project costs, A, a cost totaling $433,313, and B, is cost of $73,302. Ken Costin says the data is in your handouts, unless you have specific data, just would like to have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dave, do you want them separated, or all together?
No, it's fine.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
And I think we can do some of the public hearings that are going to be continued. Would that be okay? Since we don't take any public information at that time? That'd be fine with you guys? So 37A, hearing on dangerous building located at 1101 Seventh Street North. They'd like to continue that to 111918. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
And then the second one that's been continued is the renewal plans. It's item 37E, renewal plans for districts 201801, 201802, 201803, for demolition of existing structures, site cleanup, public works improvements, and redevelopment, multi-family housing units in blocks 2, 3, 19 of Burgeley Addition. Is there a motion to continue the hearing to Monday, November 5th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 1B, since we moved this up and we still have to wait for public hearing, there's amending section 8-1009 of Article 810 at Chapter 8 of the Fargo Municipal Code relating to parking regulations. Jeremy Gordon to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Dave, I know you, Mr. Pepcorn, I know you pulled it, but I could further explain what we have going on here.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I just jump in real quick? So, thank you very much. I got a call last night, so I apologize for the late notification, but I just, that's the reason. They just, there were some neighbors that were concerned, and so me, or I just looked at it as an opportunity to explain the reasoning behind it. And so, and then also they'll have opportunity for comment, so thank you for doing that. And thanks, I'm sorry for the late notice, Jeremy.
And you've got six minutes. Make this go six minutes, Jeremy.
No, I can, hey, I can.
No, actually, so the mayor's trying to beat my record, and so he's trying to speed everything up. So just take your time, be very thorough, don't be in a rush.
All right, so, good evening. I've talked to Christie on this issue. So what we're, so this all came about in February when we approved the plans for Fourth Street. So we're tearing up Fourth Street, reconstructing it in this picture, basically from the water plant up to the YMCA. As part of that, we were going to remove on-street parking and straight bike lanes. That's still the plan. But to help all the folks that relied on Fourth Street in the winter months to park on that street, on the avenue night and the street night for our winter parking rules, we wanted to make it easier for these folks to park in the winter. So our original plan was just to do the green area. So that's the river to Fourth Street, from Sixth Avenue down to 11th Avenue. I thought it wouldn't hurt to go to Fifth Street, but we settled on the green plan. And then Christie called me last week and had some talks internally, and we think that going over to Fifth Street will help the folks between Fourth and Fifth Street as well. So we'd extend the boundary, pretty simple stuff. We would allow the, no parking on Fourth Street, but on the avenues you'd park seven days a week. So for winter and leaf maintenance, you park six days a week on one side and park on the seventh day on the other. So there's, they can always get to the curb on at least one of the days of the week. So that's, that's what our game plan would be. As far as the, the legal action here, this is the second reading, so we would recommend continuing this or continuing this another two weeks to allow this change to occur and then come back in two weeks, hopefully for final.
So the motion you'd like tonight is what? Continue to two weeks?
Well, we have to modify the definition of the boundary or the border here, but we could do that between now and next time we meet. In the next, instead of approving the green and then coming back and amending the purple, let's just do it all at once in two weeks.
So Dave, do you want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to continue it, but I'd suggest that if there's anybody here that wants to comment on it, that they could still do that, if there's anybody here, if that's okay.
I think Christie wanted to comment.
Hi. Mayor and Commissioners, we just wanted to thank you and the city staff. We just learned about the change late last week, and in talking to Jeremy and talking to Brian in the engineering department, both understood our concerns, and in contacting you, we had an awesome response. I couldn't believe how quickly, on a Sunday afternoon, everybody responded. So we wanted to thank you, and thank you on behalf of our residents in our building as well. It's pretty scary walking a block at night in the dark, so, thanks.
Thank you very much.
We'd also be a part, we'd be willing to be a part of the discussion if you have further questions or any other feedback for us, we'd be willing to be a part of that as well. Thanks.
Mr. Strand?
I'll second the motion, Mayor.
Okay, let me see, first and second, okay. Mr. Garrick, any comment?
Nope, so you guys got it.
Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Well, we're just about there.
It doesn't look good for my record, Mr. Mayor. I reluctantly have to admit.
Well, maybe there'll be a little discussion on this first item, 37B, application filed by Edge2 LLC for the payment in lieu of tax exemption for a project located at 1329 Fifth Avenue North, which the application will use the operation of a multifamily apartment building. Ben Hushka, oh, Jim Gilmer to explain. Guys are switching up.
Thank you. This is an application for a payment in lieu of taxes from Commonwealth Companies, who's developing low-income housing tax credit project. The city's policy regarding pilots has been to support these types of low-income projects because of the restricted rents. Otherwise, the city assessor would value this based on probably a $6 million value, but really, when you look at the rental income, from that aspect, it's probably only worth $2 million. And so this building would pay property taxes, but just not at the rate as if it was a market-rate apartment building. And so the city's been using the pilot incentive to make these projects feasible. It also helps when there's local support, because these tax credit applications are very competitive. There's more than double, people have applied for more than double what's going to be available. Last year, there were 11 applications, and only five were approved, including one next by Commonwealth Companies. It's also in Fargo, immediately next to this one. It was a 42-unit building that was approved last year. The, the city has notified the school district and the county of this proposed application, or of this application. The school district has indicated that they would participate if you're willing to support it and would be willing to contribute their portion of the property taxes. The county did not do that. The county decided to negotiate, and so we're still in some discussions with the county. What you'll see here is, if you look on the second page of the application, it shows the payment in lieu of tax schedule. Starts at $25,000, will go up to $33,000 over a 15-year term. If the county elects not to participate, then it would be $11,000 higher than what you, what you see there. And so I'm not sure it'll be, you know, feasible without the county participation. We'll have to continue to have some discussions with, with them. Erin Anderson is here with Commonwealth Companies. I thought it'd be good for her to tell you a little bit more about the project and be able to respond to any technical questions on the project and the need, and maybe give us a little overview on how the first phase is going, the 42 units, prior to this, 48 units.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add a couple of quick things while they're getting ready?
Mr. Pepcorn?
So this is exactly what we're trying to become involved in supporting, and I think we're all in support of, if we don't make an effort to have affordable housing in the downtown, we're not going to have any. And, and it's, this is a very, a very important thing to make a priority, because the, it's a good thing, the values in the downtown are going up for real estate, that's good. But if we don't make a conscious effort, there's not going to be any low, low-cost housing in the downtown. 50 years ago, the downtown used to be the center of the low-cost housing, and, and so we're having an exact opposite influence. And so this is very important to us, and I, the one thing I want to say before we start is, this is a very important thing, and we need to encourage the Cast County Commission to vote in favor of this, because this is not a business, this is not jobs. These, eight of these houses, eight of these apartments are for homeless people. And that's, this, this is a big deal, and we need, we need to start looking at this, not just right now, but down the road. We are going to have an issue with not having housing for people that work downtown, that they'll have to live either on the outskirts of Fargo or in another town. And so this is a, this is a big deal, and, and so the Tax Exempt Review Committee, we look at business things, and I do agree, you have to be careful, but this is, to me, a totally separate issue to have the low-income housing. And so I'm very much in support of it, and I would encourage any of the Cast County residents to contact the Cast County Commission, because they are reluctant, because it's a 15-year commitment, and they think it's too long. But with federal guidelines, that's the way these low-income housing projects, that's the length of, of the commitments. And so it's a big deal, and so I would encourage other people to support it, too. And I wasn't trying to filibuster to help you. It's very true, it's, it's a big deal. And I know John's in support of this, too, and so I don't want to speak for you, but I, I think it's, it's very important, and I think for all of us, it's an important thing. Thank you.
Almost on time for her as well.
All right. We're having some technical difficulties here, but we'll go low-tech and keep it simple. Thank you very much for having me. My name is Erin Anderson. I'm with Commonwealth Development Corporation. Really appreciate your time today, Mayor and Commissioners. We're really excited about the opportunity of bringing more affordable housing to the city of Fargo, close to downtown in particular. One of the things that we discovered with our first phase, the Edge Artist Flats, which is currently under construction, we just had a, our second construction draw today, in fact, where we did the inspection, and we're just about out of the ground. We're with, by the end of the month, we should be going vertical, so we're really excited about that. And that's 42 units of affordable housing. When we were working on that phase, we knew that there was the opportunity, that the land adjacent to the site would be very conducive for a second phase. We know, we know that the demand is very high for affordable housing in downtown, the really, especially non-age-restricted housing in particular, and, and, and especially for families. And so with this new development, what we looked at was including more three bedrooms than we did with the first phase. So you're going to see a higher percentage of three-bedroom units here. We have a total of 48 units total. The height of the building is the same as the original phase, which is four stories, with the first floor being covered parking, which is a great amenity for the development. We also have similar partners in this project. Commonwealth will be the owner. We have Metro Plains Management, a local, very experienced property manager, working as the property manager on this development. And then we do have a small portion of the units, eight of the 48 units, set aside for families and individuals formerly experiencing homelessness. And Southeastern North Dakota Community Action Program was working with us on that. They are working with us on the first phase, and they're excited to provide additional support services. Those support services primarily being case management. Our rent structure is set up slightly differently on this than the initial phase. In the last couple of years, there have been some changes to the tax law, which allow us to truly create a broader mixed-income development with the Affordable Housing Tax Credit Program, which means, whereas previously we could only serve folks up to 60% area median income, now we can serve folks up to 80% area median income, which is really an exciting opportunity, because oftentimes, in that 60% to 80% median income group, it's going to be tough to find housing that's affordable, or to, or they're, they're paying more for their housing than they really should. Our average rent is coming out to be about, if you look at the, the big picture, our average rent is $700 a unit, just to put that into perspective. Our one-bedroom units are about 680 square feet, two-bedrooms, 860 square feet, and three-bedroom units, 1,100. We have a community room, onsite office management, a fitness room, and a room, area for the support services for individual case management for the permanent supportive housing that with the payment in lieu of taxes, essentially what it allows us to do is create a financially feasible project that otherwise would have about a, a little over a million-dollar gap. The project is not financially feasible without the payment in lieu of taxes, because that million dollars makes or breaks the project. There's, we would, we would have to completely change the scope of work entirely, and it wouldn't even work proportionally to make it a smaller project, because we're back where we started again. So, again, we have nine one-bedrooms, 24 two-bedrooms, and 15 three-bedrooms, so, as I mentioned, a good number of three-bedroom units, 85 total parking stalls, and the eight units designated as permanent supportive housing. We have, most of the funding for the project comes from the low-income housing tax credits, which are the highly competitive, there's a very highly competitive process that was mentioned previously in the introduction. Only about half of, or half, or even sometimes less than half of the projects that apply for the funding actually receive the funding. And, and that's because it really pays for the majority of the project. The beauty of the program is that it's putting private investment into affordable housing instead of a direct subsidy. So, for example, with the first, the current project that's under construction, Nationwide is the investor in those tax credits, and they put 80% of the funding into the project when they purchase those tax credits. The other funding that we're applying for to the state is called Housing Trust Fund, and the Housing Trust Fund is set up to really focus on the folks at the 30% area median income, and also those permanent supportive housing units that I mentioned. So a few examples of residents that could be potential applicants to live at the Edge would be, for example, a person in their 70s that's retired, that wants a two-bedroom unit for $456. 20s student with a part-time job as a cashier, looking for a two-bedroom unit at $456. Somebody who's a warehouse laborer, making about $50,000 a year, there, that needs a three-bedroom because they have children, and that would be about $875 for their rent. A nurse assistant with two kids that makes about $50,000, that needs a two-bedroom unit. Their rent, this would be one of those 80% area median income units, would be about $1,000. a family of four with a single head of household, a single parent who is a cook, making about Needing a three-bedroom unit would be $746 a month, and a customer service rep making $46,000, desiring a one-bedroom, so this would be a single person. That would be another example of one of those 80% area median income units, would be about So our emphasis on making sure that the key to really keeping affordable housing such that it doesn't, it dispels any myths that communities may otherwise have about it, really comes down to the management. And that's, again, why I mentioned, we're still partnering with the same property management company, Metro Plains Management. They have a good, really good track record. We do have stringent resident selection criteria based on their income, their rental and credit history, and public records history. And, as I mentioned, really working with that support service provider is another piece that makes this project unique, really offering that case management for those eight units. In summary, without the payment in lieu of taxes, this project is not feasible, as it creates over a million-dollar gap, which is a shortage of the funding needed in order to create housing that averages out to be $700 a month for folks in the community. On behalf of Commonwealth Development Corporation, Metro Plains Management, and SenCo, we thank you for your time and support, and look forward to bringing more affordable housing to Fargo.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is anyone present who wishes to speak to this project? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? I'll close the public. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion by the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Garrick.
So, maybe stating the obvious here, but downtown is inflated, and the cost of housing downtown is inflated mostly because we offer incentives that unnaturally lower the cost of building, and it brings in more profit for those doing it. So we have, and then we give an incentive to people like this that want to offer low-income housing. So we have a government program that, that puts, that puts the inflation in, and we put another government program to balance, to counterbalance that government program, when the simple solution is, is to stop inflating it unnaturally through incentives. So if we stop doing incentives, the market will correct, the market will react, and you will then have affordable housing without more incentives.
Any other discussion? Mr. Pepcorn? Mr. Strand, sorry.
Thank you. I hope you're, I hope you're aware of our appreciation of your, your efforts to bring affordable housing to our downtown. It's an absolute critical need, and, and as I understand, LITC, the Low Income Housing Tax Credits, it's population-based, so the competition is very high and it's very limited. We're fortunate to have this in our community. I, I join in with Commissioner Garrick in, typically, we, I, I want to I join in with Commissioner Garrick, and typically, we, I want to say Commissioner Garrick and I supported the first phase of this tax break for the pilots, and I hope he does as well this time. And I also hope the county steps up because housing, affordable housing and accessible housing is just an absolute critical need in our community, especially for workforce, not to mention the other folks who have this need. But I just wish we could do more of it. I wish we could counter the gentrification downtown. I wish we could provide affordability downtown. I wish there was more population in North Dakota so that we could qualify for more of this housing. We have a booming population. So, thank you very sincerely for your efforts and for your contribution to our quality of life for so many families in our town.
Thank you.
And to your comments, they say there's room for 5,000 people beginning to work downtown. John, I think you're writing your comments that we're going to need more housing downtown. I think we've looked at that. Commissioner Pepcorn?
Just a couple of quick comments. So, the location is excellent, too. It's within walking distance of a grocery store. It's a couple of blocks, well, it's on public transportation nearby. Maybe, Jim, you can talk a little bit about, one of the only negatives, it's right across the street from the Best Mexican Drive-Thru, so I don't know if that will be a good thing or not. And it always smells like fresh bread because the Wholesome Bakery is across the street, so those might be a little bit challenging. But can you talk a little bit about, so it's a 15-year, that's kind of the requirement to make the model. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. So, 15 years is the compliance period, that it's the minimum amount of time that there needs to be affordability restricted on the land or on the property. When it's complete, there's 15 years of affordability requirements that we have to do what we said we were going to do in the application that we make. As it turns out, that 15 years actually gets doubled. Just one of the changes over the years with the tax credit program was that they said, well, 15 years is great, let's make it 30 and make it really great. So, we're actually committing to 30 years of affordability on this property. But our investor is only in it for that 15 years, and then they typically exit. And so, when they look at it, they want to make sure we have level expenses for 15 years. They don't want to see a lot of up and down. Otherwise, if expenses shift suddenly midway through that 15 years, they're essentially going to require us to reserve, to take the worst-case scenario and then reserve, set aside a reserve, upfront, capitalize a reserve for whatever the difference would be. So, it doesn't work out very well to have variable expenses. They basically have us lock it in in year one, and then the standard trending is an assumption of 3% expense increases.
So, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of quick things. Another thing I wanted to add is, this is in the Roosevelt School District, and so I think that's important to a lot of people to know. But I do think we should carry this to the Cass County Commission because a couple of the members there are accountant, and so that number, they're accustomed to shorter durations, but I think it's important for us to explain this, that there's a reason that it's 15 years. And so, I do think, I think they will support it, but I do think we have to make extra effort so they know this. So, maybe, Jim, you can talk about that, that we can, they haven't taken action on it, basically, but we can hopefully.
Yeah, they've decided to negotiate, and actually, they've appointed a committee which will try to meet with your Tax Exempt Review Committee tomorrow at 1:00. The other thing I want to just comment on is, you know, we have these projects on the perimeter of the community, or in, for instance, in Urban Plains. And when these LITC projects are led by a nonprofit developer within state law, they automatically have lower property taxes, actually lower than is being requested here. So, none of these projects are feasible, whether they're downtown or on the perimeter, without these types of property tax exemptions, because otherwise, the restricted rents don't bring in enough to pay the property taxes. So, that applies downtown, it applies on the perimeter of the city. You're seeing applications, there are two phases, a home field that have those property tax exemptions, and a third phase that's in competing for applications this year. So, I just wanted to point out that information. And I think it would be important for the county to understand that, that if this were led by a nonprofit developer, they would receive even less property taxes.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item C, application for HRP Fargo LLC at the Tavern Grill for Class I alcoholic beverage license at 3233 45th Street South. Steve Sprague, to explain?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So, this might look a little bit funny because the Tavern Grill was here, oh, six months ago or so, and got an FA license. They got that and operated at this location while they were building their new structure, which is right next door. They had since have transferred that FA license to the new structure, but they want to continue to serve in the spa, which is where they're located here. And so, they've applied for the I license, which is, it allows beer and wine, it does require the food sales. So, we've gone through the background check, and it does come to you with a recommendation of approval. Any questions?
Is there any president who wishes to speak regarding this application? Anybody wishes to speak? If not, a closed public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Your second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
NMD, application by Hornbacher's, doing business is Hornbacher's Wine and Spirits for a Class B limited alcoholic beverage license at 4265 43rd Street South, Suite 121.
This is a transfer from Lake Mode Liquors. It didn't get listed exactly that way, but that's what it is. And so, Hornbacher's, about six months ago or so, got issued a Class B limited license at the Village West location. They were still working out with their landlord, moving the bits and pieces around to get a space that was going to work for them. They hadn't gotten all of that resolved yet, and hence, they hadn't started using that B limited license. Our ordinance is only required, or only allow, one B limited license per applicant. And so, what they've done is forfeit the Village West B limited license in order to acquire this license through a transfer. This was Lake Mode Liquors, which has been in business for about 11 years, and the proprietor is retiring or backing out of the business, and so, selling to Hornbacher's.
So, is there any rules of how close a grocery store can be to a liquor store? You know, in the city, sometimes they're both in the same area. This will still be separated physically?
Yes, it's still separated. We have the 100-foot rule in the city of Fargo, and this still continues to meet that.
Very good. Any discussion? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this application? Does anybody wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
So move.
I'll second.
Strand, Pepcorn. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Mr. Garrick, we're sorry you're out in New York doing all that stuff, but you know the Vikings won yesterday? I just wanted to remind you maybe, huh?
Well, they were playing the Jets, but I forgot to watch the game for once. That was good.
And while Grinberg is gone, he's already posted that he's got one of the larger Elks out in Montana, so we've all seen that. That's the reason he's not here tonight. Only Garrick is continuing to serve the National Guard, that's why he's out in New York Syracuse. Any other business? Dave, I think you successfully filibustered to make this meeting go longer. I noticed a couple of times you commented when you really didn't need to. Move to adjourn. I move. Second?
Second.
All of them favor, say aye.
Aye.